Welcome out to the public hearing on redistricting. I am Delegate Gary Howe from fifty-sixth District, which is in Central County. I chair the House Committee on Redistricting and I am the co-chair of the Joint Committee on Redistricting. Before we begin, I would like to recognize the members of the legislature here. I will do the House. From the House Committee, we have Delegate Statler, Delegate Williams, and Delegate Anderson, members from the House who are not on the committee but are here. Delegate Sappel, Delegate Walker, Delegate Hanson, Delegate Riley, Delegate Kimball, Delegate Fleschire, Delegate Ward, Delegate Mallow, Delegate Garcia, and Speaker Henshaw. I'll turn it over to my co-chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome. I want to welcome everybody who's here. My name is Charles Trump and I'm a member of the West Virginia Senate and really grateful for everybody who's turned out tonight. This is really exciting. You are at the head of the class. We've had, this is the sixth one of these public hearings we've had around the state and we have a more substantial turnout here than we've had in any other so far. A few of my colleagues here in the Senate tonight, members of the committee, and I want to introduce them. At the far end of the table to my right is Senator Sappel. Senator Sappel actually represents a part of Montague County along with Preston and Taylor and Barbour. Actually, it's part, all are parts except eight or nine counties, isn't it, Dave? Eight counties. To his left is Senator Eric Tarr, who's driven up here from Canal Valley tonight. Senator Tarr represents a district that includes Canal and Putnam Counties. And to my immediate right is the indomitable Senator Mike Caputo. And we are in Mike's district, as I understand it right now. Senator Caputo represents a district that includes parts of Montague County and Marion County. And since, actually, Mike and Dave are both host senators, so I'm going to hand the mic down and let our host senators give everybody a welcome as well.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chairman Trump, and thank you all for being here today. I really knew, and I told Chairman Trump last week, I thought we were going to have a really good crowd in Morgantown. And I know we're all concerned about where the lines are going to be. I see both my county clerks are here from Marion and Montague Counties and they have some concerns that they want to address as well. So to everyone from Mon County, welcome to our district. I bring you greetings from Senator Beach, my senior, our senior senator, and me. And we're glad that you're here and I look forward to hearing what you have to say. If you have any questions afterward, real easy to get ahold of. Stop, talk to me, get my phone number, and we can chat about any questions you may have after the public hearing. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, good evening. I'll just copy the same thing that Senator Caputo had to say and we're really proud to see that there's community involvement here in Morgantown always steps up late. So, welcome and please give us your thoughts and likewise, I will be here after the meeting and you can always reach out to me on my legislative email or legislative phone number. Thank you, Senator Trump.
Thank you both and for your nice remarks. Notice tonight, everybody here, all the politicians here at this front table are being briefed. And that's unusual. But, there's a good reason for it. And the reason is, we're here tonight to hear from you. We're starting into a process that is required to be done every ten years under the West Virginia Constitution. After a decennial census in the United States, the legislature is charged by the Constitution with withdrawing all of the delegate districts, the state senate districts, and the congressional districts of West Virginia. It hasn't been done for ten years, it stays in place for ten years, and we have to do it in accordance with guidelines that are established by the United States Constitution and the West Virginia Constitution. Today is a red-letter day in our process because I'm told that today, the United States Census Bureau released the census data. And so, we've been waiting, we've tried to be patient, and so I'll say we've been waiting patiently for that because normally it comes in April, in the year following the decennial census. And it didn't this year. Some of you may have heard, it was a pandemic of sorts last year and slowed a lot of things down. But the Census Bureau has released the data and our staff is going to work with our software vendors to crack it open and be able to start drawing maps. We haven't been able to do that yet because we don't have the data. You see some maps here, but they're old maps. And so, they're maps of current congressional districts, House of Delegates districts, state senate districts, as they are configured now and have been for the last ten years. But soon, we're going to be able to start drawing some maps and we're hoping to do lots of input and information from all of you. So, we've got about twenty people who've signed up to speak tonight and what we're going to do is just give everybody five minutes. I think we've got an official timekeeper around here somewhere. Who's that? Is that you, Jeff? We have a timekeeper, so he'll put the hook on anybody who goes beyond his lot of time. But, it's a red light, actually. It's not a hook. Okay. So, with that, let's start. And the first person signed up to speak is Ken Martis.
I'm going to need a prepared statement here. First, member of the legislature, I'd like to thank you for a meeting and all of that being held around the state. This is how redistricting process should start. I'm incredibly impressed with this, studying this process for a few years. A few months ago, Republican Governor of Maryland Larry Hogan laid out a plan on how redistricting process should proceed and end. He asked the question, is it a conflict of interest for the members of legislature to draw their own districts? Considering that and other things, the governor issued an executive order creating a Maryland Citizen Redistricting Commission. The order lays out a systematic bipartisan structure to draw congressional and legislative districts. Transparency and voter input are important aspects to this order. The Maryland Plan is similar in organization to legislation that has been introduced in our legislature the past few years. All these plans require a formal approval of the legislature of all the districts created. It is time for the voters of West Virginia to choose their elected representatives rather than the elected representatives choosing their voters. In 2018 and in 2020, several states had referendum proposing a citizens' redistricting commission. In every state, in every election, the referendum passed. Whenever the idea of redistricting commission has been put before the citizens, it has almost always been approved. In two states, there are many states I could mention, but Utah and Missouri, Republican leading states, approved legislation to approve the redistricting process. In Montana, a Republican state, has had a redistricting commission. Without an independent redistricting commission, the legislature will have to be extremely careful in drawing district lines that fashion out and layout by the, following the state constitution and recognized rules of district creation. Gerrymandering the drawing of districts repartisan gain is not only rigging elections, but against the democratic principles the nation was founded. The words of Governor Hogan are profound and I'll end with his quote. "The fight for fairness and bipartisanship in the redistricting process is not a fight between right and left, but a fight between right and wrong." Thank you.
Mr. Martis, thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker who's signed up, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name, but I believe this is Ethan Moore.
Good evening and again, thank you to the members of the legislature and several in this committee that are hearing these public comments tonight. I have, I also have two prepared statements. The first is, in my individual capacity as a voter that lives in District Fifty-One and Senate District Two, a representative form of government is predicated on the elected representatives actually reflecting the values, views, and voice of the citizens they serve. I have lived in the rural western area of Montague County my entire life and rarely have I ever had a delegate or senator elected that truly represents me. I support single-member districts and support a district that serves my community by electing a representative that shares my experiences, views, and concerns. I would prefer a delegate that represents Blacksville, Hundred, and Mannigan in one district more than one that attempts to simultaneously represent divergent and often competing interests of urban Morgantown and rural Montague County. My second statement is, as Chair of the Montague County Republican Executive Committee, it's a resolution passed by that committee. The undersigned certifies that he is a duly elected and qualified chairman of the Montague County Republican Executive Committee. The undersigned further certifies that the following is a true and correct copy of resolutions duly adopted by the MCRUC on the tenth day of August 2021. Whereas the previous eight redistrictings encompassing eighty years of West Virginia's history were conducted by a Democrat-controlled legislature, whereas Democrat-controlled redistricting has perpetrated the abomination of multi-member House of Delegates districts and other atrocities such as overlay senate districts, whereas all of Montague County's residents have borne the brunt of voter dilution created by multi-member House of Delegates districts, and whereas the MCRUC supports the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia and their precepts of one person, one vote. Now therefore, be it resolved at an historic moment, our legislature of West Virginia should remedy and avoid the aforementioned wrongs of redistricting perpetrated by the Democrats over the last eighty years. May it further resolve that the dictates of our sacred Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of West Virginia are tamped out in the redistricting process. Finally, be it resolved that the MCRUC entrusts our legislature with its logic, reason, and judgment to guide it in the redistricting process. Witness the following signature date of August tenth. Ethan Moore, Chair. And I have copies to share with the members. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, thanks you very much for your comments. Let me say, and I've been reminded by colleagues on both sides of me and they're correct, this is for Mr. Martis and Mr. Moore. Any of you who brought prepared remarks, if you want to leave a copy with our clerk, we actually may have the ability to scan those and post them up to our website. And that goes for anyone else who follows. Either write comments or maps or anything else that you'd like to leave with us. I should mention, before I forget, the brochure was mentioned by Dan Precher earlier. It has pointed the web address for the redistricting website and email addresses for anyone who maybe didn't sign up to speak or wants to augment or supplement his or her spoken remarks with written comments sent to us. And we're going to be able to post that, along with maps, to the website, not just for the legislature, the members of the legislature, House, and Senate to see, but for all public to see. And perhaps submit their own comments based upon those. So, that, those are all welcome. The next person signed up to speak is Nathaniel Wormson. What is it, Nathaniel? Wormson? Wormson. I apologize. But welcome. Four jurors.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for having us on here. I'll be brief. I'm up here to support single-member districts, specifically District Fifty-One. I'd just say I've been a member, lifelong resident of the county, often outside the city. And Morgantown's interests have greatly represented the county and sometimes forgotten about outside areas of the county. That's all I'd say.
Nathaniel, thank you for your remarks. The next person signed up to speak is Sarah Barnes. Here's Sarah. Welcome, Sarah.
My name is Sarah Barnes and I'm president of the League Women Voters of Morgantown, Montague County. The League Women Voters is proud to be a nonpartisan organization. This means we neither support nor oppose candidates on political or political parties at any level of government. However, we are always working on vital issues of concern to members of the public. Ensuring fairness and public participation in the redistricting process is one of those vital issues. We have long advocated for the redistricting process to be the responsibility of a nonpartisan commission to ensure that political districts are not drawn in favor of political parties or to discriminate against certain voters. In the absence of such a commission, we expect the redistricting committee to adhere to the provisions in our state constitution requiring districts to be compact, contiguous, and considerate of the boundaries of our counties, neighborhoods, and communities. We ask the committee to also take into account the efforts by the city of Morgantown last year to rebalance the boundaries of its wards. This process thoroughly documented, is thoroughly documented and was successful in fairly adjusting the ward boundaries for population and registered voters while respecting existing neighborhood, street, and topographic boundaries. Additionally, the maps from Morgantown were made available during the process to solicit feedback from the public and adjustments to the final map reflected that vital feedback. We recommend that this committee follow the Morgantown model and engage the public throughout the redistricting process to ensure our maps are representative of our communities. The goal should be voters choosing their representatives instead of representatives choosing their voters. Finally, redistricting should be transparent and participatory. Public hearings are essential for accountability. We appreciate your meeting with the public today and on other days, and we expect the committee to continue to engage the public as participants in the drawing of new maps on which we will rely for the next decade. Thank you.
Ms. Barnes, thank you very much. The next speaker signed up is Jay Tam. Hey, welcome to four jurors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the committee. It's good to be here and great, greatly appreciate all you've done for this whole redistricting process. And I know you guys set up everything with the hundred-member districts now, single-member districts. I'm very much looking forward to that. I live in the Forty-Ninth District down in Taylor County. And what we have there is most of Taylor County, but we lose one sliver over to Harrison County and then we get two precincts, one from Marion and one from Mon. So, it really confuses a number of the voters and especially that Mon one there because we've had candidates that tried to run for that. But, you know, so, one of the things I encourage you with these hundred districts is that as much as possible, it would be almost nice if it was a rule, keep the counties whole as much as you can. I strongly encourage you to do that, you know, for the voters, for who you're representing, and just keep them whole. That's so important. And I'm really looking forward to the hundred members. I mean, here in Morgantown, people get to vote for five delegates. I'm down there in Taylor County drafting, I only get to vote for one. Why is their vote up here, why is mine more important than mine? So, I know you hear some people trying to encourage you to, you know, to switch or something, but stick with it and I thank you for that. On the senate districts, certainly, you know, I got the Fourteenth and I'm in that one, but boy, that thing's huge. If you try to drive across that, it's like two hours. So, I certainly hope as you're rearranging some of those that you can, you know, try to make sure you keep them as compact as possible and you keep, counties like-minded there. And you can also take that sort of mentality with the congressional districts. You know, different things there. I mean, since we're going down to two, it's either going to be a north-south or east and west. It almost makes sense for the panhandles to be together and, you know, then the, almost the southwest part there, the rest of the state, the south. But, you know, we'll see how the numbers work out there. But, I just thank you for everything you're doing there. It's, I'm really excited about this whole process and just that I have confidence that you guys are going to do it right and I'm looking forward to it. And just, I don't know how to emphasize more, but keeping the counties whole. It could somehow almost even be a rule. I know that would have to be like a constitutional amendment and sometimes the math doesn't work there, but as much as you can, please, please, keep the counties whole. All right? Thank you and good luck with all this.
Mr. Taylor, thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker on the list is Elliot Dotson. Elliot, welcome. Four jurors.
My name is Elliot Dotson. I'm a student at WVU and I've lived in Mon County all my life. So, my main concern with the redistricting process is fairness. So, there's an inherent conflict of interest with any elected officials drawing their own districts. And I ask the committee to reflect on that. I understand that the redistricting can be a political process, but it's also a human process and one that will affect people in their ability to engage with their government that they may feel is increasingly disconnected from them. This is why the federal and state constitutions put in checks on how we carry out the redistricting process. We're bound by the state constitution, Article One, Section Four, to draw congressional districts on county lines. And the state constitution in Article Six also mentions that the state and house districts should respect county boundaries. And the importance of these boundaries was understood by the authors of the constitution who knew that the districts that arose from these rules would be around for far longer than they could predict which party would be in power. And this cycle, we need to respect those borders and consider the effects that disregarding them would have. No one likes gerrymandering, of course, but why? I'd say that no one likes gerrymandering because the people want competitive seats that represent their whole community. They want their representatives to have to work hard to keep their positions. And a fantastic system that we have for that is already implemented. Counties, in West Virginia especially, due to the lack of urban population centers for the most part, we value connecting not only with our neighbors, but with our neighbor's neighbors. You'll hear far more often than not, our fellow West Virginians introduce themselves from, as from a county rather than a city. Even me, though I was born in Morgantown, I say that I'm from Mon County. So, I'm not asking the members of the committee to not be biased. That would be totally unreasonable. I'm asking this committee to reflect on your biases and consider not just what, not what's necessary to make any one party prosper, but instead what's necessary to make our communities and our state prosper. Thank you.
Mr. Dotson, thank you very much for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ryan Kennedy.
Co-chairs, members of the committee, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ryan Kennedy. I am a lifelong resident of Harrison County and also the former mayor of Clarksburg. I came before a body similar to this about ten years ago when they were having redistricting hearings then. I came advocating for single-member delegate districts. That did not happen ten years ago. I am back advocating for it tonight. Multi-member districts are severely outdated. Only ten states still have them, West Virginia being one of them, and they were actually outlawed federally in the early eighteen hundreds. Why are single-member districts better than multi-member districts? Well, I'll give you a few quick points. Number one, responsiveness. It is human nature that the more territory and more people you have to cover, the less responsive you can be to any particular person. I will use my own home county of Harrison as an example. We have a four-member delegate district in Harrison County currently. Therefore, all four of those members represent the entire county. Any one of them could get a call from a constituent from Johnstown or Lost Creek or Wallace or anyplace else in the county and have to try to address that person's concerns even if that particular delegate lives on the entire completely opposite end of the county. Whereas if there were four districts in Harrison County, in theory, and each one had a single delegate, then that delegate would live within that quarter of the county that the person is calling from. They would have, they would live much closer to their constituents and therefore they would have a much better idea of what the problems actually are. Being, having lived in Clarksburg, pretty much my entire life except for my military service, I am very familiar with the problems of Clarksburg. I know where the potholes are. I know whose dog barks too loud. But ask me that question about Salem or Lost Creek or Wallace or Johnstown or even the other fine communities we have in Harrison County, and I have to go ask somebody that lives there because I don't know. I don't live there. Our delegates should live among us and so, by, and by doing this, they'll only have, they will have fewer constituents and less mileage to cover so they can truly serve the constituents they do have. Also, this leads to geographic diversity. Almost invariably, and this county, we're currently standing in as an example of this, when you have a multi-member district that has an urban population center, you tend to have the delegates come from that urban population center when you have a multi-member district. Up here, we have a five-member district and they invariably come from Morgantown. Down in Harrison County, we have a four-member district and they almost always come from either Ridgeford or Clarksburg, yet two-thirds of the people in Harrison County don't live in either one of those towns. And I think my friends, you know, obviously, I'm a big fan of Clarksburg, but I think my friends in other parts of my county ought to have somebody represent them that lives somewhere near them. And finally, it's best choice, not next choice. If you have a hundred single-member districts in this state, every single delegate will have been the first choice of the people of their district, the number-one vote-getter of that district. You won't have somebody that slipped in second, third, fourth, fifth, et cetera, that maybe wasn't the best candidate, but you had to pick so many, so they slide through. It's been shown in the forty states that have already abolished single-member districts that when you go, that have already gone single-member district and abolished multi-member districts, that when you do that, you get higher quality of representation because the voters have one, have one shot, they vote for one person, and that's the person that they like the most of all the people running. So, you get a hundred first, you get a hundred first choices, not some first choices, second choices, et cetera, which is what we have right now. And I thank you very much for your time and I hope that this committee will and the legislature will later adopt a hundred single-member districts finally in West Virginia. It's time.
Mr. Kennedy, thank you very much for your remarks. The next speaker up is Charlie Russell. Mr. Russell, four jurors.
Chairman Trump, Chairman Howie, members of the committee. My name is Charlie Russell and I'm a resident of the Brookhaven area of Montague County. First and foremost, I want to express my support for single-member House of Delegates districts. I think the legislature correctly made that change to do away with multi-member districts a few years back. And I look forward to seeing that come to fruition in these maps. Secondly, I've followed these hearings in the media and also heard it a lot tonight, that people want to keep their counties whole. I totally, I totally understand that. I may even agree with that. But I think it's impractical to expect that result in every instance, just based on how the maps have to be drawn. You have to start Hancock County, sort of work your way down, so you're probably Marshall Wetzel Counties are immediately broken up. Same thing, working from Jefferson County East. Counties has, has to be split. And also, just based on the populations of counties. Some counties aren't large enough, some counties are too big and don't have the, you know, multiples of eighteen thousand-ish to achieve that. That said, though, Montague County, I think it has a population that would support six delegate districts wholly contained within the county. So, that's an option, but as a resident of the eastern part of Montague County, I believe that my interests could be potentially better represented by a delegate who lives in Mason Town or Reedsville in Preston County as opposed to a delegate who lives in the city of Morgantown. And I think we've heard others from Blacksville or Orangeville may agree that a delegate from Reedsville or Hundred might not be the worst thing for those votes. from Reevesville or, or Hundred might not be the worst thing for those, those votes. Along the same lines of source splitting districts, I think Montegalia County itself would be a senate district, would be the right, right population for that, so we could be guaranteed two senators come from our county. However, right now, we have six senators who represent significant portions of our county and I think that's, that's advantageous through various committee chairs, leadership positions. I think at one point, the senate president and the senate finance chairman both represented parts of Montegalia County, which are, are two powerful positions. So if Montegalia County is split, I think someone else addressed this, I live in the 14th district, I think the 14th district should probably come a little bit further, cover more of eastern Montegalia County with Saberden and Cheat Lake and maybe do away with the Hardy, Grant, Mineral County portions of that district. And lastly, for congress, I think that a northern and southern district makes the most sense with that dividing line being approximately Route 33 in those counties, you know, north and south of each county's whole, meaning the, the population requirement. The state has many unique and distinct regions, but I think that the northern and southern parts of the state are the most identifiable regions. Thank you.
Mr. Russell, thank you. The next speaker signed up is Rebecca Aranda. Hope I said that correctly. Welcome, Ms. Aranda, the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm a Mon County resident and Senator Trump said, my name is Rebecca Aranda. I appreciate all of you guys at this table being here tonight. I know you've been traveling, some of you, all around the state to be at these, that's sort of exhausting, so we really appreciate the effort that you are putting into this. I've been trying to educate myself and my friends and family members and community members on this process because I think it is vitally important that we know what's happening around the state and how we are going to be represented. In doing so, I have watched several of the other hearings that have occurred on the legislative YouTube channel and one thing I've heard members of the public say in a variety of ways is, "Draw the lines this way because I want to keep so-and-so as my senator," or "I'd be really upset if you drew the lines so that so-and-so couldn't be my congressperson." Well, I appreciate the sentiment because obviously I have my brothers too. I just want to make sure that this is not the way that you guys are looking at the redistricting process. It's my understanding that the state constitution provides several guiding principles that should be considered in redistricting and none of them are, ensure the districts are drawn so that Johnny gets to vote for his favorite friend Steve or vice versa. So these sound ridiculous, I know, it's, it's examples that, that kind of make you roll your eyes perhaps, but, but we know that it actually does happen and it's happened here in West Virginia. So my, my request is that you have the fortitude to stick to the true guiding principles of compactness, consecuity, and maintaining communities of interest. As you've heard over and over again in other counties, people want to be represented by people who live near them, who face the same problems and understand the needs of their locality. So let's please do try and keep the politics out of this, let's walk the straight and narrow line of doing the right thing and making districts that are truly representative for all West Virginians without regard for which party is in power. And finally, I know it's too late for 2021, but please, I implore you and your fellow legislators, before 2031 rolls around, let's pass some legislation creating a nonpartisan redistricting commission. It's past time to retire the notion that the party in power gets control of what our state looks like politically for a decade. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aranda, for your comments. The next person on the list to speak is Kyle. Katie?
McAvoy.
McAvoy. My apologies, Kyle.
That's all right.
Mr. McAvoy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone here for taking the time and letting them hear and from all of us. It's really great for everyone to get a chance to connect directly with their legislators on such an important issue. And being able to connect to your legislators, part of the problem with multi-member districts, you're creating, or not creating, but as we currently have it, it's a barrier to connecting with your delegates. When you have five different votes, for example, in Mon County, and I'm resident of Mon County, you have five candidates or 10 candidates that you're going to have to look up, not counting any independents. That's a lot of extra research and I don't mind doing it, but a lot of people are going to be overwhelmed with that much information rather than a single-member district where you have a much smaller choice to, to read about your candidates, you have more time to invest in them, learn about them beforehand. And similarly, you are creating a barrier to connecting to your delegates once they're elected. If you have an issue and you want to call your representative, you want to email them, whatever, instead of having one delegate, you're going to have to contact five effectively. That is a huge extra step that other areas in the state don't have to do. Another burden it is, is for getting people involved in politics. You always want good people running for office and you want people who are common to their, to their area and you want as little burden on that as possible, little financial burden as possible. When you create a five-member district, if you, and I want to be accurate about this, I don't think it's a, off to say you're going to need at least $50,000 to run for the 51st district in this county. There are other counties where you might only need $10,000 and not because of the competitiveness of the district, but just the sheer size of it. By having single-member districts, you lower the financial burden on each candidate and that's a very good thing. Another issue, not so much only because of single and multi-member districts, but also how you draw the lines when you draw them, it's important that you fix the current problem of, that you've heard so many people discuss here already, western Mon County, for example, and that's where we are right now, being so different in terms of their problems and issues than the city of Morgantown. And vice versa, you know, I'm a resident of Morgantown, the issues I face or the issues I may have that directly affect me every day are very different than somebody in Wadestown. They may have issues with broadband internet or cell phone coverage and things like that that I simply don't have in Morgantown. I don't have that problem. And while we may have some problems that are overlapping, they're, they're competing. I have issues with roads. People in the western end of the county have problems with roads, but we're going to call and have competing, we, we both may call the same legislator and, and try to split that interest onto different roads. You can eliminate that problem by not just having single-member districts, but having them geographically in similar areas. It is nice to do them in county lines if possible, but frankly, if you're going to keep them contained in Morgantown, you're going to end up with five, or not Morgantown, excuse me, Mon County, Montegalia County, you're going to have five fingers stretching out, each one touching a portion of Morgantown and each one coming a little sliver out into the rural areas of the county. That continues the problem we have with multi-member districts. You want, you know, if the population is such that Morgantown has three seats and, and surrounding areas, Star City, Westover, et cetera, then that's the way you can draw it, but trying to continue it into one specific county, especially when Mon County is a, a pretty big geographic region and then other counties like, let's say Lewis is much smaller. Hancock County is much smaller. Wetzel's very large, Mon County's very large. You, you're not going to be able to do it that way. It's important to keep them geographically similar so that their issues and problems are similar and that's how you get the best representative representing you. I appreciate your time here very much.
McAvoy, thank you very much for your comments. Before I call upon the next speaker, I want to make an observation and he's probably going to be mad at me for doing this, but that's okay, I'm accustomed to it. In the back of the room, I see that we had the arrival of our other host senator, our colleague Bob Beach. Bob, please stand up and I'll invite you to, if you want to say a few words of welcome. Anyway, Senator, it's great to see you tonight. The next person signed up to speak is Drew Talbot. Mr. Talbot, welcome, the floor is yours.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate you all being here. My name is Drew Talbot. I live on Point Marion Road and I'm here because I'm in favor of single-member districts. I want someone who knows my community best. I don't want someone who is just in it for their own community like we have in multi-member districts. I want someone who knows my problems close to home. That's why I think we should have single-member districts. One delegate, you know, one person. I think when a single-member district, each delegate can be held responsible for what they do or don't do to their constituents. In a place like this, you know, there's a lot of ground to cover for delegates as well, a lot of money for it to run a campaign and we can eliminate a lot of that with single-member districts. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Talbot, thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Paula Martinelli. Ms. Martinelli, welcome. The floor is yours.
Hi, as you introduced me, I'm Paula Martinelli and I live here in Mon County. I'm also, actually, I'm just down the road from Drew, so I live on the Cheat Lake side of the county. But I can say I've been here 30 years and I think that I've dealt with a lot of individuals, I've worked in the community here and it's a very confusing political process to understand. I think that you can understand why it's confusing when you realize, Mr. Kennedy said that 40 states have abolished single-member districts. So people are not familiar with that when they move to West Virginia and it seems strange to them. And it is strange and the, the more that you vote here in the county, the more you realize that, that what is happening is that voters want to choose, as Ken Martis said, voters want to choose their representative, or voters choose their representatives rather than their elected representatives choosing their voters. And I think we have it turned around right now and I think the single-member districts would correct that problem. We, as everyone has said here, we're a diverse county, there are rural interests, there are very urban interests, there's university interests that conflict with, with interests in the western end of the county and actually in other smaller parts of the county. I think that we want to do what people are asking for, which is have them be represented at the most local level possible. I think that some of the gridlock that we have in this county in dealing with issues has to do with the fact that it's challenging to have these individuals that can, that can come into the county and run for office and maybe not really understand a good portion of what's happening here. There are examples of lines going down the center of the road in Wadestown or in Cheat Lake should be avoided. I'm a ballot commissioner in this county and I've heard our county clerk say that voters are very confused when they go to the ballot and the politicians who are on their ballot are not the people that they thought they were going to be voting for because all of their communications have to do with people that, that are not going to represent them. So we have some problems, I think we can overcome them in this process and I think that's what the expectation is from the voters of West Virginia towards you all, so, thank you.
Ms. Martinelli, thank you very much. The next person on the list who signed up to speak is Cindy Chambers. Chambers, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight and to hear us about this important decisions that we'll be making in the future. And I've just looked at several things, I'm not really all that versed in all of this stuff, but I just know that every election, I've lived here for 35 years in Morgantown, but now there are parts of the state, other times of my life, and it's just so confusing. You have all these people running for office in this one big area and it's like, well, who's our representative? We don't know. We are so different from Blacksville to South Park to Suncrest to Cheat Lake, it's just people have different interests, people have different things that they, they want to have done and I just really think we need to have people involved, delegates involved with individual areas. I guess that would be the single district members or whatever because the people certainly in Morgantown, we have certain areas of South Park, Suncrest, the roads need addressed, we have potholes, we have all these different issues with the trucks coming in from Route 7 and, and all the different things we have, but it's totally different from Blacksville. I, my family lived, I came from New Martinsville earlier and went to school at Magnolia and traveled Route 7 many times. Blacksville's very different, Hundred's very different from Morgantown. You leave Osage, you cross that bridge, you go past Osage, and it's just a very different rural community. And I think that communities of interest is one thing you need to be looking at, compactness of the areas of the districts, equal distribution, we need to have the same, we don't, we don't want to have unbalanced numbers of people voting in different districts and we want to have continuity where people can walk from one end of their district to another if they had to. But I think the most important thing is communities of interest. We have different interests in town, we have different interests in Blacksville, we have different interests in Cheat Lake and other areas of the county. So I think, I just hope that you look at these different areas and look at the single-member, the single-district person for each district because then we know who to call. I, you know, I've contacted people, I've talked to people in my neighborhood, I live in South Park and we don't, people don't know who everybody is. It's like, well, who are they? Who are they voting for? Who will, how will they help us? Well, probably pretty sure we'll get stuff done in Morgantown because we're in Morgantown. But people in Blacksville, they just seem to be on the outskirts of everything and they don't get the help they need. So they need someone to help them and so, you know, if you could make this different and, and not make it a multi-community because certainly they can't, nobody can be in charge of everything. Nobody, we have too many people, too many things, too many problems in Morgantown, too many problems in Blacksville that are so different from each other and we need different people handling that. We need people in our communities, in our county to know who to call and that's the biggest thing is that people don't, it's like, who are these people? We don't know who these people are, so, anyway. Thank you very much for listening and thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers, thank you very much. The next person signed up to speak is Barton Flores. I hope I said that correctly.
You're correct.
Mr. Flores, welcome, the floor is yours.
Thank you all for having me this far. I think this is very important. It's all been said, I won't rehash it.
Pull that mic a little closer to you.
I say it's all been said, I won't rehash it, in the sake of brevity, I'll pass.
You have, you have five minutes, two minutes, maybe more. Thank you for your, the next speaker is Vlad Kudry. Hope I said that correctly. Mr. Kudry, welcome. The floor is yours.
I'd like to thank all the senators and delegates here for listening to everyone's comments. I've come to support switching from multi-member districts to single-member districts. From a citizen's perspective, multi-member districts create a confusing situation where people have a difficult time figuring out who represents them and this in turn contributes to apathy towards the legislative process. So switching from multi-member districts to single-member districts represents, in my opinion, an increase in transparency and accessibility for constituents. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Kudry, thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is Thornton Cooper.
Oh.
Mr. Cooper, good to see you again, the floor is yours.
Well, this is better than two nights ago when I was the only one signed up. Yes, my name is Thornton Cooper, I live in South Charleston in Canal County. I have been involved in redistricting for the last, after the 80 census, the 90 census, the 2000 census, the 2010 census, and here I am again for the fifth time. And I was a party in the challenges to the, the state senate redistricting committee, senate redistricting plan 10 years ago, to the House of Delegates redistricting plan 10 years ago, and also to the congressional redistricting plan 10 years ago. So it, there were proceedings in all of them. I have been fighting for single-member districts for 40- I have been fighting for single-member districts for forty years. This is not a Democrat versus Republican issue. I am a Democrat. Why do I hate multi-member districts? You think it's bad here in Montegay County, five, in Canal County? When I was a teenager, we had fourteen we elected at large. Can you imagine trying to pick wherever you were in Canal County, fourteen out of twenty-eight? So I have been working against multi-member districts for nearly forty years. And I actually submitted a proposal ten years ago, which I believe Senator Trump says you will put on the website, right? Because I handed it over two days ago and then I also emailed it yesterday. And it tells you exactly what my plan was ten years ago. But let's talk about what it would have done for Montegay County if the legislature had adopted my plan and not the one that they adopted. So let's talk, moving down to Montegay here. Okay, so what the, I would have had, delegate District Nine would have been everything on this side of the Monongahela River and one precinct on the other side. Because, I mean, so that means Granville, Blacksville, Westover, and much of unincorporated areas. So that would have been one. Okay? So since you've got everything on this side of the river and that one and one precinct on the other, obviously all the other precincts or all the other districts would be on the other side of the river. So that the next district would have been parts of, my District Ten would have been parts of Brookhaven and parts of Cheat Lake and a little piece of Morgantown. It's very difficult to exclude Morgantown because of the way Morgantown is situated. If you don't want to cross county lines, it's, you're going to have a great deal of difficulty because of the Morgantown, at least the Morgantown mailing address, it's going to be really difficult. The next one was, my District Eleven was Morgantown. For example, South Park, okay? South Park. That's where I spent, I lived at seven ninety-five Grand Street when I was a second-year law student. I did go to law school here from nineteen seventy-five to seventy-eight. Had a fifteen-speed bike. I didn't have a car. So I got to know the hills, I had to have a fifteen-speed bike to get up Grand Street and Stewart and Falling Run Road and up to the law, up the law school driveway. So I got to know things pretty up close and personal. But if we had adopted that plan, you would have had the areas in downtown Morgantown and South Park, that would have been District Eleven. The next thing would have been where I spent my other two years as a student. I lived on Pineview Drive, which is near the Med Center, and I lived on Inglewood Boulevard. So you, this, my District Twelve would have been Star City, Morgantown, around the Evansdale Campus, law school, the med school. The stadium, by the way, when I was there was downtown. They moved it up after I graduated from law school in seventy-eight. But then another of my districts would have been District Thirteen, it would have been Morgantown, parts of, bottom unincorporated areas, and Cheat Lake. And then there would also have been like two precincts in another county. Now, on the question of not cutting up counties, I did this to the best of my ability ten years ago and I only split one county that had less than one percent of the state's population and that was Senator Trump's county of Worgen. And there was no way, I think Senator Trump agreed, there was no way that we couldn't split Worgen because you had Jefferson and Berkeley to the east of it and you added up their populations, you didn't have a multiple of the one-hundredth of the population. So you had to put Morgan in one and Morgan there. But I will work hard to come up with a plan that splits as few as possible. By my calculations, there would be twenty-two, based on the population, twenty-two counties in West Virginia, each have less than one percent of the population. So my first thing is not to worry about the big counties, it's to see that we do not cut up the small counties. For example, Tucker County, where my father was born, the second least populous county in the state, the West Virginia Legislature cut that thing up for the first time in the history of the state ten years ago. I want to put Tucker County and Worgen County, as many counties, of course, Worgen never has been divided, but all these counties, but make that the first thing. Then worry about the bigger counties. Now let me shift over to the State Senate. Montegay County has a great opportunity. The estimates, and we will not know if the estimates are correct until the Census Bureau releases the actual figures today, but the estimates say you have about one hundred five or one hundred six thousand people. That is almost exactly the same amount as the State Senate district. So if it's anywhere, say, over one hundred one thousand, I'm going to recommend that Montegay County become its own State Senate district. And you will then not have people from outside of Montegay County voting for people that represent you and vice versa. I've had that privilege my whole life because I live in South Charleston. So I live in the part of Canal County that has never been in a multi-member State Senate district. Thank you. The lights are on.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Justin White. Mr. White, welcome. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to thank the committee for being here and you all have a job ahead of you and so thank you and we'll keep you in our prayers. And I also like to say that I'd like to see the good community turnout tonight. We've got a good community turnout and I really appreciate that. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of Westover. I'm here on behalf of representing many of the residents of Westover that many times we feel overshadowed on the other side of the river. And until my friend who just spoke in front of me, he's the first person to mention the city of Westover all evening. It hasn't been mentioned one time and that's how we feel. From my house, I have a beautiful view of downtown campus. At night I can see the library lit up from my upstairs and it's fabulous. However, I'm just across the river and we feel left over. That's how we feel. And so I'm here tonight in support of my fellow Westoverians, as we say, to support for single-member districts. Because we want to have a say in what's going on. We want to have a say in what's happening in the county, just like Blacksville does, just like our Nextville, just like these other communities. We feel that it's very important. And I'd also like to mention, because I do live in Westover, I'm from Westover, is Westover is an economic driver of Montegay County. And we would like to be represented as such. And again, I thank the committee and I also thank Speaker Henshaw for taking the time to be here tonight. Thank you so much. And again, the community, I thank you all for being here and I thank the other delegates who are here tonight. We appreciate you being here and we appreciate your time and thank you.
Mr. White, thank you very much for your comments. The next person on the list to speak is Marley. I want to say it's Anicas. Is that close?
Marley Anicas.
Anicas. Marley Anicas. Ms. Anicas, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Marley Anicas, proud resident of Jerome Park in Morgantown. The term gerrymandering was coined over fifty years before our state's founding and our founding constitution made sure that representation was paramount by requiring compact and contiguous districts to reflect each community. Transparency is how we achieve community representation going forward. I appreciate the public forum here today, but I urge the Joint Commission to continue to make this process more transparent. Not by merely broadcasting this forum on YouTube tomorrow, but also by creating methods for all West Virginians to be able to attend and have a voice, regardless if they work too far from a forum to attend in time or if they are unable to join in person because they are immunocompromised. We have the technology, now let's get the data. We can and should incorporate remote public hearings as well as these in-person ones to make sure all communities of West Virginians can be represented. I asked the Commission for joint, I asked the Joint Commission for fair representation through community representation when withdrawing the districts. And before we are able to achieve fair representation, we must have transparency, accessibility, and inclusivity throughout the redistricting process. Thank you.
Ms. Anicas, thank you very much for your comments and I should say, you make an excellent point and I didn't mention this earlier, but we do have scheduled, we're just going to schedule some virtual public hearings too, for the point that you made exactly. We know that no matter, we're going to about a dozen different places in West Virginia and holding these hearings, but we know there will be people who can't get to one. And so for that reason, we think we have the technology. I will not be operating the equipment, I promise you, but we have the capability to host and hold some of these, four or two or three similar to this, but on a virtual platform, Teams platform or Zoom, I think it's Teams that we use, but we're definitely going to do it. Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is a name I can't pronounce and I've known for a long time. Delegate Barbara Fleish. Delegate, welcome. Great to see you tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks to everybody for coming this evening. This is a great crowd. This is an important issue. Thank you, members of the committee, for being here. As Rebecca Aranda pointed out, we know, people think of West Virginia as a small state, but anybody that has had to drive across or up and down knows that it is pretty tiring to do all that driving. So thank you for making the effort. I want to talk tonight about counties. Counties, counties, counties. And I also want to talk about what this committee and what the legislature has to consider. We have to consider our federal constitution and our state constitution. And our state constitution, under federal, under the federal constitution, we decide three things. We decide the congressional districts, we decide the senate districts, and we decide the house districts. And there's specific language in our state constitution about each one of these. All three of those areas, it talks about counties. And the only time, so the congressional language, it says in Article One, Section Four of our Constitution, "For the election of representatives to Congress, the state shall be divided into districts, which districts shall be formed of contiguous counties and be compact." We have never broken county boundaries for our congressional districts and that's a good thing. For the senate districts, it says, "For the election of senators, the state shall be divided." And every district shall elect two senators and the district shall be compact, formed of contiguous territory bounded by county lines and as nearly as practicable equal in population. And of course, we have to be as equal in population both by our state constitution and by our federal constitution. But that language about senatorial district is even stronger than the congressional language, bounded by county lines. And here in Montegay County, we have three very weird districts. We've got one district that has Fairmont and Morgantown. We have another district that goes all the way up to Marshall County and down to Calhoun County and across to Cheat Lake. And then we have another district that was described before that goes similarly weirdly very far east. And I think that we are not following the constitution. If Montegay has the sufficient number of citizens for a state senatorial district and we should have two residents of Montegay County be representing the senatorial district because of this mandatory language in the constitution, we, there are a bunch of cases that have been decided by our Supreme Court that say "shall" means "shall." And the district shall be compact, formed of contiguous territory and bounded by county lines. That's what it says. And we need to stick to that. We've not followed that in the past and I think we really need to go back to that and do it the right way. These are the rules, we, these are the rules, we need to follow the rules. The house districts, the language in our state constitution about house districts is a little bit more complicated. There are four different sections, but basically there are two kinds of districts. There are counties and then there are delegate districts. And the way that, in the tradition, is that, and there's a formula. You divide up the whole population by a hundred and then every county that has one, you know, one-hundredth of that gets a delegate. And then the counties that don't have that are supposed to be joined up with, so there's a fraction of that have to be joined up with contiguous counties. It's not clear to me, I mean, you know, I would like to see an independent redistricting committee, that's not in our constitution. I think there are advantages and disadvantages to multi-member or single-member districts that's not in our constitution. But if we are going to have single-member districts, I strongly believe that they have to be bounded by county lines. So, because of the language in here about county districts, there are counties and there are delegate districts, there are combination of counties that have smaller population. Why did this happen? The reason it happened is because that's the way, we have very few cities in the state of West Virginia. People identify with their county. And I think that's why it's written that way. It's written that way in many, many other states. And I think we need to follow our rules. And so I don't think the question is, what do we, what do we think is the right way to do redistricting? I think the question is, as a lawyer, we have to follow the rules that are already there. And under these rules, a lot of people have been saying they want county lines to be respected. That is what the rules are.
Thank you very much, Senator Henshaw. Our final speaker who signed up, our final person who signed up to speak is also a man of the House, Delegate Phil Malo. Well, in the interest of time, that's generous, but you were the last one signed up and we still had time. So let me do this. If there's anybody that wanted to sign up, but the signup sheet got yanked away and brought in here before you had the chance to, if you want to raise your hand, come to the mic and we have a little bit of time. Yep, welcome. And I'll ask you when you get to the, yeah, come on, come on up. And, you know, I know what happens sometimes is the staff will pull the signup sheet away from the table and bring it in here, maybe before everybody got a chance to put his name and his or her name on it. Please just go right up to the mic and tell us your name and we'll give you the floor.
I'm Jenna Brown. I live here in Montegay County in Cheat Lake area and I've been in West Virginia for dark close to eight years. I know that doesn't make me a West Virginian, but I am a mountain air, so that's okay. How you doing? I was asked to make a couple of comments about this. I've read most of it, some of it's pretty ponderous. I would ask this, the draw to draw the congressional districts in a way that combines the existing first district with Canal County plus the counties that are in between them. And it seems to be more sensible.
Please keep your mic up closer.
I can't, can you hear me?
I should have said this earlier, in the call for not doing, you've seen the camera over there on that corner. What we're trying, one of the things we're trying to do, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, is we're making an archive of the comments we get at these various public hearings. Because just as we worry about citizens who can't get out from one of these hearings, we worry about legislators who don't get to, you know, attend all or many of the hearings. we worry about legislators who don't get to, you know, attend all or many of the hearings, we want to have an archive for members of the House of Delegates, members of the State Senate to be able to hear and see that which we've seen. So, hold the mic close and please continue. I'm sorry to have interrupted.
I've never been accused of being really quiet. Thank you. By doing so, you would balance out areas of growth with areas that have population decline. So, it seems as though when we, these get divvied up, it would make more sense to keep some evenness across the selections. Montegalia County and the eastern panhandle are the only parts of the state with significant population growth, but Canaan, southern West Virginia, has significant decline. So, it would make more sense to me anyway, if you were to match up those that need some help versus those that have kind of got a handle on it right now. And I don't have any idea how it started or who made the decisions or what brought us here, or even how it's going to be adjudicated after this. But looking at it in that way, having come from another very, very populous state, it seems as though they gerrymander those lines every 20 minutes or something, I never know where I live. Montegalia County, excuse me, splitting Montegalia and the eastern panhandle into different districts makes sense. Otherwise, the congressional districts will grow out of balance, they'll likely need some significant redrawn another 10 years or so. And those kinds of things that could be avoided during that time cause a lot of turmoil, not only in the way that our elections are held, but who decides to run when knowing there might be a change here, two years, four years, six years from now. And I think it changes people's motivation for running and how they're going to handle it if they do get elected. So, the normalcy of living in a certain area, there's always a life cycle of a city, either it's on the upswing and then suburbs become more attractive and all the ones in the city begin to decay, and then suddenly they go in there and revive that all up and everybody leaves the suburbs and they kind of become forgotten places. So, we don't want to do that to our counties on purpose, so hopefully we'll have some of the input that we say will be taken into account. It would also balance economic interests. The economy of north center West Virginia and the eastern panhandle is relatively strong, has been for some time. Why would we want to create one district with a growing economy and one that is declining in dollars? Because what follows that is people depart there, they can't get jobs, they can't, they can buy houses inexpensively, but you can't get a job to support the house. So, just evening these things out, and maybe they might move back and forth within districts or something. But as our country starts to come back into an economic climate that would encourage this kind of staying in place, that might be something we want to take into effect or take into consideration. The plan would not only be split equally on population, but close on party registration and performance. And I think it's really important to talk about the registration, whether it's going up or going down. There are always shifts every time we have an election. These people want to go vote that way, these people decide they're going to get in the middle. And, but, but, when you take into consideration the party populations, you really don't want to see if you're setting up a couple of counties to become uber-party, just one party. That's really hard to unlock. Ask me how I know that about California. I lived there most of my life and you cannot unlock right now the legislature in California. So, the plan's really not that different from our current map. It just shifted a little bit south. The current second district already runs from Jefferson County to Putnam County. So, you know, you might have kind of an oddball shape of something, but if it accomplishes the things that we want to accomplish for our party and for the state of West Virginia, that just makes sense. That's it.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? You throw a hand in the air? Yep, please, we have time, so just come forward to the mic, please grab the mic and tell us your name.
Sure. Good to meet you. Good evening, I'm Andrew Price, I'm from the Western End. To give you a little background, we've been, Price has been in this county since 1820. And I will tell you that my great-great-grandfather, Senator William Price, was one of the first senators in the state of West Virginia, would be extraordinarily proud to have all of you here tonight to discuss this. This is extremely important, that we take a step back and look at how representative government truly works. A representative government needs to take into respect a small group of people as possible. I mean, I can honestly say that I am friends and know every one of our delegates. Joe, Evan, Danielle, Barbara, I mean, every one of you are friends of mine. I try not to be, you know, counterproductive in any way we do business, but I will tell you that I want to have someone that lives next door to me that's vibrant representative. And I think that does well for all of us and benefits all of us. Morgantown is not representative of the Western End. And the Western End is not representative of Morgantown, nor is it representative of Cheet Lake. And to make us truly representative, we need to have as small a person, a smaller group of people with a direct relationship to that person as possible. And to continue that, I think that we will grow as a state. To do that, we will economically grow. We have a whole lot of challenges ahead of us right now. We have a tremendous challenge, having lost the jobs that we have lost in this county ahead of us. But we also have a shining star in the industrial park that's getting ready to go off and take on. So, along those lines, we have the opportunity to elect people that are directly involved with producing those jobs. Thank you.
Mr. Price, thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah, okay. Please come forward. Thank you, just grab, grab the mic and tell us your name and.
My name is Kennedy Roberts. I live on Pleasant Street downtown. I've been a resident of Mon County for seven years now. Hopefully, I'll try not to repeat anything that's already been said here tonight. I wanted to echo the comments of Mr. Kennedy in saying that indeed, we are only, we are one of only 10 states that still have multi-member districts, but indeed, the problem is a bit more pernicious than that. In fact, most of those states, you could say, oh, well, 20% of the states have multi-member districts. But seven of those states have something very similar to what we have in the Senate, with each district having two representatives. In fact, West Virginia is only one of three in the country that have differently constituted multi-member districts. So, I once again applaud the legislature for remedying this issue. And just to come right out and say it, although it has been said, I'll make it a bit more explicit. In 1940, in 1950, in 1960, in 1970, in 1980, in 1990, in 2000, and in 2010, Democrats drew the districts in the state of West Virginia. We have had elections since 2014 and the will of the people has been expressed. The Republicans are in control and it is our turn to draw the districts. We will follow the Constitution, we will follow all regulations, and the districts shall be fair and equitable. But it is also true, as any fair political scientist will tell you, there is no such thing as a perfect district. There is no such thing as an apolitical district or a neutral district. I want to echo the comments of Delegate Flyshower. I very much agree that it's important to keep the counties whole whenever possible. And I think it's even more important in our state in that we are one of the few states that use our counties basically as our school districts, which would give our representatives the, you know, they can better represent their constituents when they send their kids to school, if they're able to only be looking after one school district. The other issue I wanted to speak to and use this opportunity to do so is not an issue that perhaps will come before this committee, but it is of the fact that we are moving to two congressional districts from three. I think I speak for all West Virginians when I say that this is incredibly unfortunate. Our state is the only state in the nation with a declining population, I believe it's over the last 50 years is the statistic I saw. And it's incredibly depressing, frankly, that we don't have the growth that other states are seeing. However, I will say something about the way that we arrived at that number of two as opposed to three. After we move to two, our citizens will be among the least represented in the country. Each of our two congressmen will be representing more citizens than anyone else in Congress. Our not immediate neighbor, but near neighbor Rhode Island will have nearly twice as many people in Congress for each of their citizens. Now, there is an executive order that was issued by President Joe Biden, Number 13986. If it were not for this executive order, we would still have three members in Congress. I would urge any electeds here to use their positions to make this known. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity once again.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anybody else who didn't sign up to speak who wants to address, tell me. Come on up. Just grab the mic and Delegate, the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the committee, and thanks to members of the community for showing up. It's great to have such a large crowd. And we appreciate you coming to the 51st. The members of the committee have done a good job of not responding to comments because I think that that's what they're not, what they are supposed to do. And it's been alluded to by some of the speakers, but just to clarify, we are going to single-member districts. That's not open to debate. The legislature has already passed that bill and it's happening. And so I think it should appreciate that. And the question is then not whether we're going to the 100 districts, but how to draw them fairly. And that's a real issue, especially here in Mon County, because we have the largest multi-member district in the state. We've got the five-member district that so many people have brought up. And that's essentially a blank slate for the committee to address. There's no pre-drawn lines that they might want to make little adjustments to. They could draw these districts, they could slice up the 51st district however they want. And so I would echo what many of the residents have brought up today about how important it is for us for these districts to be drawn fairly. There was a bill that I co-sponsored for an independent redistricting commission, which was not taken up. And I understand that, but it does have some best practices that I would hope we as a legislature would follow. And they're the best practices that so many people have already brought up today about compact districts, districts that respect political boundaries and geographical features, and respecting county lines. And I guess I would conclude with my opinion about county lines. I think that those are very important. I would imagine that Mon County will have six representatives in the House of Delegates. And I think what's best for Mon County is to have the strongest representation possible in the House of Delegates. And that means having six dedicated delegates who represent this county. Thank you.
Delegate Henshaw, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? If not, let me just say then we've filled up an hour and a half and I think I can say on behalf of our whole committee, this has been absolutely great. I mentioned earlier, it's the best turnout we've had in any of these public hearings and great comments and thoughts from everybody. I am, and I'm sure all my colleagues in the House and Senate will really appreciate the time and the thought you've put into this. It's kind of exciting for me and those of us who are political wonks to see on a summer night when there are probably many things, other things that all of you could be doing that you're interested enough to come out and share with us your thoughts and views. I will say again, tonight is not your only opportunity. We're going to have more public hearings and we have the capability on the website, email address, website address. If you didn't get one of these brochures, please do. If you want to submit materials in writing, we will take them, we'll post them, and they'll be available for inspection by other members of the legislature, House and Senate, plus the public. You know, I think all of us want this to be a transparent and open process that has lots of citizens. This government, your government, belongs to you. You're the people or the sovereign power of the government. And you get to decide and tell us how you want it to be structured. So, again, hospitality, here's to the great. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight.